Okay, Teresa brings us some business for the finance, or the finance, we will pause this meeting for finance.
Morning. The reason I am here today is CD, one thing is our CD is maturing for our American Rescue Plan A back in July of 2021, and also that we've received our second, second half of that disbursement from the US Treasury that I was wanting to see how you wanted to proceed with the, if we want to increase the amount of CD and include all of the money that we've received so far, including interest, or if we want to reduce it, or what exactly your ideas are with council, have you decided on doing anything with money, or progressed anywhere from that?
I think we have made some, a list of things that money could go towards. Not had any expenditures.
Just need to decide if you want to leave the CD the way, the amount it is, want to increase it, including the, the second installment we've received, or you, or somewhere in between, fully a P A, it matures Monday.
I think we talked before about putting it in that CD that was, I would just suggest that we put both draws in the same CD and time comes, oh, from it, yes.
Okay, so, get a motion.
I'd make that motion that we include our second draw on first, and using the CD, funding is needed.
Okay, got a motion, second, any discussion?
Also, we currently have it as six-month CD, did you want to increase it here, or you want to keep it?
You know the difference in the interest rate on those?
There wasn't any difference right now, I, you know, with the last ones that I just did, I don't know if that's changed, probably six months. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
All right, seconded then.
So, now we have a motion to roll it all in one, and make it six months, add a motion at second, any further discussion on that? Okay, all signified by saying aye.
Aye.
I do have a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion.
I second that motion. Finance, uh, meeting portion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back to our agenda, Nathan.
Morning, everybody. First, a couple of constraints, I'll be able to confirm this afternoon that we've made the progress, but based on my communications with Ton and Blank, my understanding is today they should be finishing up some of the door hardware issues that had been delayed. Circuit Court and CASA will be moving into their new suites tomorrow. We had previously discussed the possibility- We had previously discussed the possibility of doing an open house in the Justice Center. Both Judge Walker and the prosecutor have expressed some reservations about bringing the general public traipsing through their offices where confidential documentation is stored, that sort of thing. So, I think if we want to do something, we should probably limit it to showing off the new courtroom. I will leave that to your discretion if we want to do that or not. Judge seemed to be amenable to that. Just need a little guidance on whether we just want to scrap the idea, or still want to do something for the public to show off what the new courtroom looks like. Prosecutor did say that she would be okay with bringing in commissioners and council members to see the offices, see what the money they have committed to spending and the time they've been has, has given us as a final product, but I don't know what she want to do about- The August meeting, in a few weeks.
So, it would be possible just to convene it earlier, take a tour through, and then come to our meeting.
Probably, but that, that is something that for the commissioners and council, I don't see why we couldn't do. That is a good point, though. I don't know, about two hours between, I don't know if that's- They're going to postpone that. I, I, I thought Amy Beechey had sent out confirmation on that, but they're going to back that up because of the budget meeting. But that, that is a possibility, yes. Do you still like the idea of a open house for the public for the courtroom, or let them to get when they sit in on hearings and trials, or are on the witness stand or something?
Any comments?
I, I would be for, I'm a- House.
I'll work with the judge then on getting something that- That's, that's an option, too. We could do a narrated video of it. I'll work with the judge and we'll figure something out. Commissioner Lamer and I have been working with Degroot Technology and Rowing to sort out some differing perspectives regarding IT needs in the Justice Center, particularly as they pertain to wireless internet service. Fundamentally, the primary point of disagreement is between two different equipment providers and service providers whose wireless access points and ancillary technology we should be installing in the Justice Center. Based on the meeting we had, I think on Friday, and some further information that RB Walters at Degroot has provided, I expect that we will have a final determination on this this afternoon, so that Rowing can get moved installation and the court can be up and running. It, it, it's really, it's a question of which one Rowing is more familiar with some of the trappings that might come along with that versus a little more flexibility with what Degroot is recommending. On the work releasability, the sheriff, jail commander Monday and I had a call with the architect last week to review the plans as they now stand. There are a couple lingering questions and a few more code issues that Commander Monday needs to report back to the architect on, but he plans themselves largely at the sheriff and jail commander's approval. So, we are getting close to moving forward with the, or finer tuned plans that are required for putting it out to bid. Any questions on the two Justice Center projects? The, out here, the engineer will be getting started soon. It will, it'll be just one trip up to do their analysis, and then they'll be able to report back to the architects and get that project moving. And then finally, in construction, the courthouse project, had a call with the architects and Ton and Blank on Friday morning. That's sort of the first real formal part that Ton and Blank has played getting deeper into the courthouse project. We reviewed the current drawings, and now that we have tentatively assigned spaces for all of the departments, we're catching them up onto speed on what those plans look like, issues that the architects have raised about mechanicals, electrical plumbing, some of that. Barnes and Thornburg has asked me to set up a call once we have that number from Ton and Blank, and I will ask Kevin to be part of that, as well as a commissioner, probably Maurice since he's on our steering committee, and then one or both of the council members on the steering committee as well. Don't have a date for that yet, kind of depends on when they get those numbers back. But they are, they've obviously been contract, but they're sort of more formally back on the project now that the first lengthy period of sorting things out with the architects is done. Starting to have some follow-up conversations with individual department heads that I haven't already had them with about some of the earliest project design questions at a office level that need to be addressed, mainly as they pertain to entry into office suites, customer service security measures, whether they'll have service counters in a corridor where it fits, or in their offices, or if they'll have a service window cut into the wall so that they can limit foot traffic and increase individual office security. So, having some of those conversations right now. And I'll continue working on that, as well as working with courthouse office holders, figuring out document scanning, storage solutions, and starting to work with all of you, and with courthouse office holders who will need to give me their needs as we figure out temporary office relocation plan. As I emailed to you on Friday, I've got an additional services request from Rowan Design, and this is a three-part request for pre-construction services, two of them beyond the normal architectural scope, one of them for additional work that is in place to update design work that previous tech had already done, based on new input from the county and the steering committee as we've gotten caught back up on this. The first component of it is surveying and civil engineering, so that's going to be a comprehensive assessment of the property site drainage, as well as preparing for final paving of Meridian Street and nearby parking, with an eye to ensuring that appropriate drainage is accounted for. As you know, the curbs on the south side of Meridian Street are ridiculously tall, and that's one of the issues. That really came into an error between the original architect and the civil engineer whom Rowan, not Rowan, has replaced with somebody recommended by Ton and Blank. The original, the original civil engineer was recommended by somebody local because we thought the person had sufficient familiarity with utility issues in Winnemac. That did not necessarily prove to be enough to justify in retrospect having the person on the job. They're a communicate that Ton and Blank is comfortable with and has a working relationship with, and that so far the architects seem to think is a, an improvement from the previous one. So, that will include some surveying and some drainage and street planning. There's a structural engineering component to this. That'll be part looking at a couple of load-bearing walls where if structural stability will allow it, they would alter, cut into, to make the best use of the space, traffic paths into offices, mostly in the low level, as well as making sure that with some of the unique features of the building, like the special corrugated metal roofs or ceilings in the vaults, some of the extra thick walls that in planning, mechanicals, electrical, plumbing, and telecom, we are being as cost efficient as possible in where we make penetrations to run those various conduits. And then, like I said, the last part is updating to the design work, as well as some additional research that the architects have had to do, and some deeper digging into historic preservation, ADA compliance, and related issues with figuring out the best means of having ADA compliance secure and transition into the building. So, working, if you have further questions, conversation for any or all of you, or Maurice and the steering committee with the architect, but there's a fairly detailed scope in your package. And like any of the pre-construction costs, these would all be rolled into the bond issue at that point.
When does it look like construction begin, or how, be the earliest?
I'm going to say at this point, we're looking at June. We had hoped for right after the November election, but with some of the delays on our end, sorting through the planning and programming, we think more realistically that by the time everything, all the bond work is done with legal counsel and financial counsel, and the bid process is completed, it'll be the first of the year. That'll give us probably the third or the fourth quarter of the year to be a little more organized and conscientious in moving departments out of the courthouse, instead of trying to get them all at one time, kind of on a rolling basis.
The contract, Nathan. Contract, ten thousand dollar allowance, that is just for this, right?
Yes, yes. That is the only place where there's an allowance if, as they dig into some of the structural stuff, it gets a little more complicated. Any, anything on the surveying and civil or the architecture side would require additional approval to go over them. And I don't think Matt, I think Matt was already a little conservative with these numbers, so that we did not have any like that.
Need a motion to approve this contract?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I would, contract.
Have a motion at second to approve Rowan contracts, eighty-three thousand dollars allowance. Other discussion? Familiar say aye?
Aye.
I have a conference request, I don't know if you want to hit that now, or while we're in the agenda. And then, the other thing I have is, I would like permission to go to the council to request a funds transfer, and to work with Rowing and/or Lightstream as appropriate to see if I need to go back to having my own dedicated hardwire internet in my office, or if Rowing can figure out the problem without going to that. As you know, we've had a lot of issues with county internet, Rowing, I've had this conversation with them recently. They feel confident that whichever companies equipment they put in, once this current work is done, courthouse and Justice Center internet should be a lot more reliable. We really don't have a speed problem necessarily, because- -and Lightstream is gig, but equipment issues, interference, there's a lot of instability. Out here at the highway garage, I think at the east annex, other places, rather than having our own hardwired lines and our own bills, we're all relay, getting relayed service from the courthouse. In terms of bandwidth alone, that is sufficient. Like I said, we have a gig, but especially in my case, because I have to get it relayed from one point and then do a second point, and I'm not a direct relay from the courthouse, the is just unmanageable at times, especially if my intern or my assistant is working as well. I've had at least five occasions, ironically enough, where I've been on Zoom calls about broadband, where my broadband connection has been so bad that I've had to go to my phone on my data because I couldn't support it. I actually had to do an entire meeting with the architects on some point last week on my phone, because the internet problem led to a mini meltdown of my laptop, and I couldn't even get back on, so I had my desktop on there for visual, and I was on my phone for audio. It would be sixty dollars a month if, if the conclusion is we need direct service again. If we went to twenty-five mag, which is less than what my typical speed is, but would have the increased stability that I don't have now, it would be a hundred dollars a month. If we were at a hundred, which would be faster than what I'm at now with the stability as well. I think with increased stability, most of what we do, we could manage at the twenty-five, I'm not certain, but I'd just like the okay to get that if the council approves the funds transfer, and Rowing and Lightstream say that unless we get a separate line, we're going to continue with this issue. It's just making man, running, it's running, making running the office difficult.
At this time, Rowing or Degroot giving you an answer to this problem, or this is the answer?
I suspect it is the answer, but before I commit to that, I want to double check. Like I said, Rowing does not think that the internal improvements at the courthouse will be recognized by the time it's relayed to, I think, EMA, and then relayed a second time to my office.
But, before you go to the council, that answer.
Okay, and I can do that.
Proceed that way.
Okay, thanks. That's all I've got, other than that conference request. I can answer any questions about it when we get down there.
The counsel. Gary?
Well, good morning, I have really three things. First thing is the truck. I'd ask you permission to look into the truck. Reached out to two other trucking companies on availability of a truck, and they replied back with their heart, I'm fine. So, I wanted to come and try and today to get you permission to move forward and purchase the truck that we did look at.
Thomas? I think it's Gary said he's booked the truck, driven the truck, there's a picture of the truck. Aye. Second? Questions? Gary on this? Who is this?
It's two thousand and six.
Oh, favor say aye?
And then I have two other things we need to have President Mellon sign our letter for, so that we can submit with community crossings, the second round, and we can do that after the meeting first. Mr. Mellon's signature, and then also, Endot got back with us just this morning on the signatures from all three commissioners and Laura for grid inspection contract that we have coming up, and then I'll have to give it to our United consultant for their signature, so we can submit it back to Endot, we move forward our grid inspection contract. But I can be right after the, I can be Doc this afternoon. Good, all I have.
Questions for Gary?
Hey, well, and I did, the town project for the parking lot is, down to next week is when Town and Country's thinking that they're going to get started on the parking lot.
And Gary, we need to just make sure that no one parks them in.
Yeah, well, I'll be in contact with Town and Country to see when they're going to do it, so I can give enough numbers with Jeff and their parking lot, have it cleaned out, nobody parks it.
Yeah, next item, being, teams.
Okay, I have looked at claims, April fourteenth, and I make a motion to approve it.
Move seconded, any other comments? Favor say aye?
Aye.
Minutes, my fifth meeting?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve those minutes.
Seconded, any other comments on minutes? Aye?
Aye.
Conference request, Nathan, in a, a session conference, that'll be held on August eighteenth. Certainly. This is a motion.
So, I would make a motion to approve all of those, that's a request.
Move seconded, questions? Favor say aye? Item four, move appointment, Charles, yes, word of trust. Move seconded. Aye?
Aye.
Yeah, but, for the A D. Three year, this.
I would make a motion, contract.
Discussion? Aye?
Aye.
Six. Votes, two issues. Act Systems, one, that system went down a couple weeks ago during out of time, temporarily, fix on it. Vote here to replace a unit. Nathan. Link, well, thousand five. And about this. Favor. Separate. Prove the new system.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve.
Other discussion? Favor say aye?
Aye.
Then we have the west annex, corners, section. This is more than once about separating airflow system. And other building, other part of the building, do that. Have a estimate here of thousand fifty, but we have A R B money, this. Station. Now we have a vote. Need a motion? Seconded, discussion. Favor say aye?
Aye.
Have any, any comments? Turn.
Okay, I do have, okay, one, something that isn't going to cost us, breakaway bike shop has parking racks, I-